Collins.
Here.
Coyle.
Here.
Tilburg.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Owen.
Here.
Yousef Abramson. Bessler.
Here. And I understand we do have two public comments.
So who do we? The first is from Scott Olson.
You know, I'm trying to think what would make most sense. Brad, maybe.
Maybe between Mary and.
Between. And just a reminder for all public comments, there are three minutes. We have a three-minute time limit, so.
Well, my name's Scott Olson. I'm just trying to get more involved in what's going on in our districts. First thing, when I was looking up the agenda, I couldn't find it until Saturday or Friday evening. Is that atypical where I only find that on the website?
Right, we're required to post it 48 hours prior to a board meeting. So it's typically posted the Friday evening before the Monday board meeting.
Would it be possible to get it sooner so I can?
It's not always finalized.
It's, we, we work on that agenda right up until the 48-hour time slot. So likely not, yeah. So it's usually the Friday afternoon before a Monday board meeting.
The second thing on the H K C improvements that we're allowed to do, I'm not sure if we've considered in the air purification systems, commercial systems that would handle an airborne virus such as COVID-19.
So usually the public comments, if, you know, we greatly appreciate your interest in wanting to support, so if there's questions you have for the administration, you can address those and then have a conversation separate apart. Usually the public comment period is not a back-and-forth. It's you stating your interest or questions and then the administration, we can connect you and can cut.
Okay.
So it's not a discussion, just so you know.
You know, that's.
Sure, no, but we greatly appreciate your interest here.
Just an interest in that because it's a, I'll have more information on it next month, that there is a system out there that kills airborne virus, kills anthrax, kills anything that'd be in the dark work system. If we're spending money on it, then.
Who should email to reach out to connect?
Probably Mary.
Mary?
She has, she'll, we have his information.
We only have his name, I don't know.
Really? Okay, thank you. And then there's a second?
Yeah.
Again, we have three minutes?
Yeah, this, this will be short, I'll keep this quick.
No problem.
My name is Megan Olmberger. I have a daughter going to Maine West High School, and my son is at Aricoi Community School, and I just have a question about the whole mask mandate, although I know this is kind of back-and-forth, so I'll just state what I'm gonna say is, right now, we're in, like it's day, day 445 with these masks, and I just wonder, I'm allowed to go to restaurants, and when I sit down, I can take off the mask. I'm wondering, like, why don't we implement that in the schools? The kids are at their desks for six hours a day. They don't have to be masked. They're gonna be sixteen to four friends, like their peers and everything. When they roam the halls, they go to the bathroom, they go to the doctor's office or the principal's office, then yes, they have to wear a mask. But I'm saying, why, why is it that I can go to a restaurant and take off my mask when I sit down, but my child's not? That's my favorite, that's.
Okay, so, so, we're with you. Take these masks too. And our intent, actually, when we get back to school, like, I can't even see because I've lost my glasses. Our intent when we get back to school is to, as Sean said, to be as aggressive as we can with the rules within which we have to work, which is pretty much what we've done all year. So our hope is, especially with the upcoming announcement in Illinois, that when we start back in the fall, I mean, we're done for this year, Paul, as Professor said, we're gonna start back in the fall, that we're gonna be a lot less strict on the mask mandates. But we, again, have to work within the guidelines that we're given, and one of the problems is sometimes, I was just telling the board, I went into REI last weekend, didn't have to wear a mask, and then I went into Jiffy Woo and had to wear a mask, and I would've thought it would've been the other way around, but, so it, you know, trust me, we're.
So it is that your hands are bound, the district's hands are bound, correct? By the IDPH?
Yep.
So it's not something that the district can override at this point?
But I thought the IDPH, did they?
It's ever-changing and know that we're completely on top, the administration's completely on top of it and will, information will come.
Did they refuel?
However, not for.
We don't wanna give.
Not for school districts.
Not for school districts.
Yeah.
Not for health organizations, so-called doctor offices, things like that. So we're literally waiting for our opportunity to.
Okay.
So we do anticipate that probably the quarantining requirements and the social distancing requirements most likely not be in effect to start the school year, but that's, again, not our call, because this is the CDC, IDPH.
Right, what about the contact?
Well, that's part of the quarantine.
Yes.
So that's another.
The, the one thing.
You know what, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're going back and sort of back and forth. Thank you for your concern. Definitely, information's gonna be forthcoming the minute we have it, and look for your emails, and we'll go to all parents and all. But thank you for your comments. We appreciate you coming to the meeting. Okay, superintendents?
Okay, so normally this time of the year, I do sort of the annual update, but before I do that, I want to acknowledge our three principals that are in with us this evening for pulling off three really, really great graduation ceremonies. The weather, yeah. The weather cooperated for the most part, which is always a little dicey when we're doing outdoor graduations, and we were able, not only pull off graduations, but we were able to pull off a vaccination clinic that weekend as well at Main South, so that, that was a really, yeah, a good weekend. So I just wanna thank them. And not only that, and I'm gonna touch on some of the things tonight, and the board has gotten an update last week, on some of the more granular things that our staff has done to really, really serve our kids, some of which can be reflected in the data, but a lot of it's really the human story behind the data that I'm, I'm proud of stuff. So I'm actually using a deck that I modified for this, but it's got the AASA Leadership Network on it, and the reason I'm using that is because this year, we have been asked consistently to share what we do in this district with districts from around the country. And in fact, there is a, there's a national commission right now from AASA that is preparing a report for the U.S. Department of Education. We were personally invited by the co-chair of that commission to become a demonstration site for this work, and those demonstration sites will be sites that districts around the country come to visit to see what are the systems that we have in place to help serve students. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about that tonight in the context of just an annual review. And those of you who are familiar, we put these even up on the wall, but these are more than just, you know, stickers for us. These are things that are our ethos, and especially the one in the middle, in terms of really trying to have design thinking that gets it right for every student. And there's a lot that goes into what we do. No one in the country is doing anything at the level that we're doing for the career advisement, the individual planning that we're doing, which is why we hear from a lot of people in the country wanting to know what it is we're doing. This year, and this is of all the data that we're gonna talk about this year, this one may be the most remarkable piece of data. And you can see that having gotten almost 4,000 career experiences last year, knowing we were going into a COVID year, we actually reframed our goal, thinking, can we get 3,000 student experiences, thinking, you know, the world's gonna change. Most districts, they had any kind of career program, they just hit the pause button. We didn't. We asked our team, do what you can to pivot, they were already ahead of the curve in virtualization, and this team, whom Sean and I meet with every month, actually this year in the middle of a pandemic, grew our career experiences by 10%. Amazing, amazing work, and I'm convinced, I really don't think a team anywhere in America did a better job. How did they do it? They created a lot of virtual experiences. It also reflects how connected day-to-day that our staff was to our students, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of that data, but this is only in the career space. So the fact that we were able to really exceed a goal that we would've tried to hit next year, a year early in the middle of a pandemic, I don't think there's a piece of data anywhere that exists in anybody's school in America that is more powerful than this, because what that means is that we were plugging in with our kids, we were getting them virtual internships, we were getting them virtual mentorships, we were getting them into job environments to help them test their career paths, and that's a really powerful and important thing, and it is at the center of what we do. If you think about distilling the work that we do down to the simplest form, your kid, my kid, anybody's kid that walks in the door, the best service we can give to them is that we meet them for who they are, we find out what they love, what they're passionate about, what their talents are, what their hopes are, and we help them find a path for their life and for their career in which they earn a living wage doing exactly what they love. You've all seen the Conrad Reich story. I get to go to work and do something I love. That's as good as it can get, and from a design-thinking standpoint, we're chasing something that is beyond anybody's test score, that's beyond anybody's GPA, that's more important and more impactful. We're just pretty far out in front of this work, but I'm incredibly, incredibly proud of what we do. So this is an idea, we were brainstorming with the team about branding this, and this is a story that some of you have seen, but this is an updated story. This is our, our first attempt at a branding campaign that we're doing called My Plan, My Story, and it's a takeoff, it's Caitlin Hanson's idea from Maine West, it's a takeoff on Instagram, My Plan, My Story, and you'll have met Nicole, but this is an updated Nicole that takes her from high school into college.
When Main South approached me about being part of the internship program, I was a little hesitant. I was like, I'm trying to run a business here, I'm making ads for small and medium-sized businesses, med spas, community banks, but I thought about another angle, and I thought, these kids are going to know what's coming up in the social world, what's trending with kids their age, and a lot of my clients are looking at, how do we get the younger kids in the door?
I took marketing and I really, really liked that, and I just thought, I want real-world experience to see if I actually do really like this, and if I could go and make a career out of it.
When Nicole first started, I was really tapped out from managing the business. Once we got past kind of the learning curve, it gave me the opportunity to add a couple more clients.
I go ahead, I create the posts, come up with the, with the captions, the write-ups, and I post them myself. I'm learning, but I'm not in the classroom.
The more time that went on, she just got better and better and better and picked everything up.
So you've got 31% of them, it's from Chicago.
Oh, okay.
I'm excited to do it. This experience has made me confident in what I wanna do when I get to college. It gives me a nice path to go on.
So at the end of the internship, I actually sat down with Nicole and I said, hey, you know, what are your plans next semester? And it was kind of funny, because it was this awkward, like, she wanted to ask for a job and I wanted to offer her a job, and then we finally realized at the same time, like, oh, okay, great, so we're here for the same thing, you know, so it was, it was nice that it all worked out.
I'm still working for Be Social here, even though I'm at college and I'm on campus. This job was already remote to begin with, pre-COVID, so it wasn't that difficult to keep doing it. I enjoy, you know, the creative side and the more structured of the job. My experience with Be Social has been so great. Because of this, I'm very, very confident in my choice of major. A lot of people here in college still don't know, and I feel that this, this confidence I have in my choice, that's strictly from this internship program.
So that's one kid's story, but within that story, within that story are some really, really key design elements, and actually I forgot to mention on that graph, we actually grew, like, our business partners by two this year. Think about that. In the middle of this year, we grew only two, but we grew, we didn't shrink. And a lot of it was this type of support that our students were able to offer to businesses. Now, what this illustrates is, one, first for Nicole, let's talk about it from the student perspective. She's in some classes, she goes to this internship, she meets up with a, with a, with a business client, one of our business clients, and is able to, one, both enjoy what she's doing, but add value. This business added clients as a result of our high school student working with her, and that partnership has continued beyond. The other really important thing that Nicole just mentioned, a lot of kids here in college have no idea what they're doing. That is a systemic problem across this country. They're going to college, they have no idea what they're doing. So our program is designed, we'll never get to perfect, we'll never help every single kid, 100% of our kids know for sure what they wanna do, but we can get to a lot better percentage than what high schools have been designed for. So this is one kid's story, but take it at scale, so this is the path of every student that we're trying to replicate, so that as we grow these stories, the other element that this illustrates is we are tracking our kids after they leave us. We really wanna know, three years, four years, five years from now, when Nicole graduates college, is she still working at this? The other piece of this that's really important, again, I remember you when we started down this path, you remember, you had skepticism, are these businesses gonna wanna work with our kids? This is much more commonly the experience from our business partners than not. When they meet our kids, they're like, wow, we've got one guy that's got the insurance company over Chicago, he says it was like meeting, and they, we had five teams, he said it's like meeting with a professional marketing team, they were building websites for him, they were doing things. The biggest mistake made for our students is that we too often underestimate them, and we need to really stop doing that, and I think our business partners have found that our kids are capable of so much and do so much, and so anyway, this is the first of these stories that we've done, it will not be the last of them, but it just illustrates the power, the design behind what we're trying to do, and so I'm super proud of that. I'm gonna share Cassidy's story with you, because she has a couple of elements that are super important too, and I want this board to really understand these points, because they become public talking points as people wanna know the subtle shifts that we're making to better serve students.
I completed my internship at two different places. First semester, I did it at Alara Engineering. I did a lot of detailed drawings and looked at, like, layouts of buildings. I learned by myself that I don't like to sit at a desk all day. Though it was very good, it was a lot of sitting down at my desk versus where the internship that I'm currently at, New Way Industries, where we do a bunch of contract manufacturing. It, it let me be hands-on and let me see what it's like to, to actually, like, work a day in this person's shoes, so it definitely affirmed that I wanted to go into manufacturing and I wanted to design. My plans for next year are going to Oakton for money purposes. They have a good engineering program that leads into good schools.
So there's two really important elements about Cassidy's story, and the first was, I tried on different things. I found I liked this, I found I didn't like that. How many kids go away to college and major in accounting because their Uncle Lou is an accountant? And get an accounting degree, go work at a firm, and six months in, go, hmm, I really don't like this. Well, if our kids can try those things on in high school to help improve their decision-making, we have served them and their families so much better. So she had a much better, Cassidy had a much better idea. The other thing that she said there, and a year from now, we'll be much better at this than we are right now, because we've changed our curriculum, our consumer ed is going to be consumer ed and financial literacy, and within financial literacy, each student will do a return on investment unit for themselves. So you heard what Cassidy said, I'm going to Oakton for money purposes, and what, what's behind that from a design-thinking standpoint, is Cassidy and her family did the math. We have tools that can look at what's the starting salary for an engineer, and they looked at the math going straight into U of I or a similar school, or going to Oakton for two years, which has a direct admit into several engineering schools. They made the choice, a return on investment choice, to do the two years at Oakton and then go to U of I. So there's that return on investment perspective. When we look at the nation writ large and the $1.6 or $7 trillion of debt that our kids are holding, we have to do something about it. Well, if you wait until college is to fix it, it will not get fixed. When you have students thinking about it at this level, where they're pre-planning and thinking and doing the return on investment, that's how you get at it. First of all, you start by making it a match, okay? But then you really try to do better decision-making at the high school level, so there's just two super important design elements there. I'm not gonna share Anna's story, even though you've all seen Anna's story, but Anna's story, Anna, first-gen West student, who went to the medical program at Northwestern, and the design thinking behind this is how much humans in the system matter, because if not for the West career coordinator who bugged on it, sign up for this, sign up for this, sign up for this, sign up for this, and Anna signed up the night before and got accepted into it, and it was such a meaningful experience for her, well, that is the value of the adults in the system working with kids, getting to know the kids, staying on top of it, being diligent, you know, being that parental voice within the school. So one of the things that we're making a change for this year is we're gonna add advisors, and that, and part of the key design behind advisory is 20 or 25 students are going to come in, let's say that Linda is a freshman, he is a, is an English teacher, and she gets 20 or 25 freshmen on her caseload for the advisor. You know what we want you to do more than anything else? Get to know them. Hey, how's your plan going? So that story from Nicole, that My Plan, My Story, how's your plan? Are you telling your story? And just be that tier-one anchor over four years, one more adult in the building to just help illustrate the importance of this. So it's, there's design behind what we're doing, but Anna's story is really a story of, Anna doesn't come from family, by her own admission, of anyone with a college degree or understanding even how to navigate that world. Well, that's our job then. We have to take that seriously, the importance of making sure that we don't let a kid, just because they don't come from a family that's, that's got college degrees, we don't let them be under-dreamed in their life. That's a really important service that our, that our adults have in everything. Okay, I'm gonna go through enrollment trends, I've given the board this, but here's one piece of information that you have to really understand. So the accelerated line blue, we're actually gonna shrink that line a little bit, just because with our move to competency education, accelerated classes are not going to be a thing that we do a lot of in the future. Students will have the ability to accelerate within classes, but we won't have these standalone accelerated classes. And furthermore, the history of our accelerated classes is they actually have been sort of gatekeepers to students getting into AP and dual credit. AP, we actually grew a little bit this year, we had a high-water mark here a few years ago, but I've said this publicly, and I'm gonna continue to say it publicly, the growth that we're really chasing is down here in dual credit, and take a look at the growth from 2013, a five-fold increase from 2013 to 2021 in dual credit. Why dual credit? Here's why. Dual credit courses in the state of Illinois, if I take an English 101 and meet a certain grade, the state universities are required to give me like credit in dual, in, in, in that dual credit. If I take an AP class, the analogous to an English 101, state universities can give me elective credit. So that English 101 I just took and, and, and got a, you know, a credit in as a high school senior, I might go to a college and have to retake it, not with dual credit. The other thing that's really important with dual credit is it much more tightly aligns with our students' career paths, because I promise you that Cassidy took some dual credits that she got credit for toward her engineering degree, our kids that go into education are taking the Intro to Ed class, so it much more tightly aligns with their, their, their career pathways. It's a better value for our students. Ashley's already experienced this, so I've talked about this publicly, we put a thing out there, and it's like, what are they doing? They're not gonna do AP classes. No, we will still continue to have as robust an AP program as we need to have, but I think this is an education program so that parents understand the diminishing value of AP, because in a lot of universities now, they won't even give your kid credit for AP. Some still do, but it's, it's, the trend is clearly the other way. I actually worked on the bill in Illinois that passed unanimously in the House and Senate in 2017 that allows our students to get these credits guaranteed in the dual credit space. So that's a change of what we're gonna do long-term. Over time, what should happen, I don't think AP's gonna do this, but dual credit is definitely gonna do this. There's no doubt about it. If we do what we need to do to serve our kids, our dual credit numbers are going to grow exponentially, they already have. Even if, I, I think this trend line that you can see greatly accelerating from about 2018, I think it's gonna accelerate even more. We are really trying to build a system where a student could leave us at the end of their senior year and have an associate's degree or the equivalent of associate's degree walking out the door. How much value add is that for their life if we can do that? So these are our trend lines for students in AP courses, and this is an ethnicity breakdown. Now, this is important because a few years ago, probably going back 10 years, there was a program called EOS, and, and we were one of the early invites into EOS, but, but how they wanted to close the gap is they wanted to stop your white students and Asian students from enrolling anymore and sort of put a cap on them and let that catch artificially. What we did instead is we just grew the whole program. Now, we still have the gap, but if you can, if you look at it from a slope standpoint, we've more than doubled enrollment pretty much on both of the groups. Will we be able to close in time? That's a key question. When we look at AP and dual credits, sort of the same trend, but look at the exponential growth for every kid. We've more than doubled for all other races and ethnicity, not Asian and white. Yes, we've more than doubled, or we've doubled approximately for Asian and white students. The reason we've been able to do that is we used to gatekeep, we used to just close out, and in fact, if the gatekeep was actually stuff that happened in middle school, if your eighth-grade scores weren't high enough, you weren't getting in, so we opened those doors up, and we've seen exponential growth. Now, take a look at, because I think this is the most fascinating slide on this, this is dual credit. Notice that in dual credit, we have the, the smallest gap that exists between ethnicities. I think that's powerful, and to me, that's the most meaningful piece of data, because it means that we're really serving our students who need to be served the most at levels that are at least approximately equal to our Asian and white students. So we wanna make sure that that trend continues out and that we keep this gap or even, or even close this gap here for all of our students. This is some data that's been shared with you, this is, now, this is not fully done, so this looks at As, Bs, Cs, Ds, passing, Fs, incomplete, or no grades over the course of nine years going back to 2013. And right now, we're sitting at about 4.3 students failing, which is a little higher than normal. However, we aren't done, we're still in progress, we've got, what, 150 students, I think, enrolled in a summer program to help continue to, to get across the finish line, so we're trying to make sure that we serve our kids. What you're finding, though, in a lot of districts, is this line right here is up here. So the fact that we've been able to really manage this really well with the complexity of what we've done this year, that's a pretty powerful and compelling piece of data, and we're not done yet. That's incomplete data, and now, here's an interesting slide too. When we look at the difference between the buildings, South has the lowest failure rate, which is interesting, and I think it speaks to just the differences of the demographics between the schools and the resourcing and things like that. It's, it is pretty interesting, and again, these are not fully done. We hope to drop both of these numbers over the next month or so and get them more in line with the historical averages. Okay, and then finally, this MTSS and all of those things there that, that you saw are part of how we track MTSS, because all of the kids that are on there, they're in these, there are these responses in terms of academics and, and other things, academic support center, in all, there were 427 students that had a single, at least one no-contact referral this year. Now, keep in mind, that's out of 6,400 students. That's actually a pretty good number. That gives you a pretty good indication, actually, of how connected our kids were, the fact that, that, you know, what, 7, 8% of our kids in total had a no contact, and then what we did when we had that no contact, which is part of our daily responsive system to make sure that we were doing any one of these things, whatever it called for that kid at that time to get them the help that they need, we made sure that we did it. And then this is just another way to look at the view, but, but contact logs in infinite campus, interventions, 3,303 students had at least one contact log, that means that, and that could be, you know, that's some kids having multiple contact logs, it's not 3,300 individual kids, but it's, it's 3,300 different contact logs, and so that gives you a sense of what are our people doing every single day to keep connected to our kids and make sure that we're supporting them, whether it's social, emotional, academic, or whatever they needed at the time. So that's a really, really important piece of information, and then I share this with people around the country, and I share this intentionally, I get these feeds every day from every building, and this is just a daily, who's, whose name came up and why do they come up? So the kids' names are redacted, but here's what I'm super proud of, the forms submitted by, these are all teachers. So the way that the MTS system works is that, you know, there's the machine logic, so we set some parameters, and if, if, if kids' grades drop by a certain amount, they get, they get flagged, or if their attendance drops by a certain amount, they get flagged. So that's the machine logic part of it, but the most powerful system, the most powerful part of the system is the humans in the system. So the fact that every day I was able to see teacher names on here, making the referrals, what does that tell me? That tells me that our teachers are paying attention to the kids, and they're doing more than paying attention. They're, they're stepping up, they're speaking up, they're doing referrals when they're not hearing from a kid or when a kid's in trouble. That, folks, is so powerful and so meaningful, and it's such an evolution of where we've come in, in our school system. And it's such an evolution of where we've come in our school system that we've got people who understand their role within a tier one system. And that's just super powerful. So I'm going to leave you with this. And this is a nice little compilation that Dan put together for what this year looked like for people. Listen to it all the way through.
Taking a district and moving it from a building structure to a non-building structure. Switching a curriculum built on person-to-person interaction to digital interaction. Teaching our teachers how to teach that way. In a matter of weeks, we all learned how to utilize all those systems. And then, all the problems that come along with that system, we learned how to deal with the problems of that system.
In special education, we recognized right away that we had students that just couldn't access learning at home. And those students, we did offer in-person instruction for, starting day one.
The students are the inspiration. They come in every day, and they're ready to go. They're ready to learn.
So that did require our staff to make some sacrifices and to be very innovative in how they were going to deliver that in person.
We really had to redesign the program this year. Make sure that students were safe, staff was safe, and that then students would also have a rich experience when they, when they were here in the building.
Benny is wheelchair-bound, paralyzed from the neck down, nonverbal, and uses a computer with an eye-tracking device to communicate. It was an amazing feat, I think, that the school system pulled off in order to get him to access all of his supports virtually, consume all of the materials, and then complete all of the work.
Teachers have been fantastic. The TAs and support group that he's had throughout the year has been phenomenal.
It was hardest for our students. Older siblings having to watch younger siblings making meals for younger siblings, ensuring that their brothers and sisters were doing their classwork. They were supporting their families in some cases, working 40 hours a week. So saw a good number of families who lost someone. How do we deliver those services that we deliver in person in a digital way?
At Main East, we do our Invest program, a check-in, check-out program. About 94 students were struggling, both academically and socially emotional. Were paired up with an adult mentor. They checked in with twice a week. It wasn't just a teacher, security officers, coaches, administrators that signed up to be mentors. Of the 94 students that we had enrolled, 75 of them showed positive growth. While they need the education, but they need the positive interactions as well.
We had to use any type of means to connect with the students, to figure out what resources, academic support that they needed, and to just all around, offer them the support they need to be successful in the high school setting.
We had to be creative. Google Voice, G-chatting, making the home visits was super helpful. How else are we going to get a hold of the kids?
They were replying back, and they were accepting the help and letting them know that they were not alone, and we were here for them.
Beginning of the school year, my grades were just horrible. If I could be honest with you, I struggled with finding motivation. That was really hard. You always hear that a lot, you're not trying. Then this year, I tried. It shows a lot of improvement.
So during this pandemic, Emmanuel took on night school and day school at the same time. So he was duly enrolled. He would show up every day, he would be here on time, and he thrived. He has earned the credit to satisfy graduation, and he was so far behind.
I had to do this for my mom, I had to do this for my dad, and my whole family. Give them that motivation to do this to my siblings.
For many of those students that I worked with were failing when I was at the graduation, and their names were called. It was a very emotional moment because we worked together, and they persevered.
In my own household, we lost our jobs last year. It was this class and this community that stepped up to raise the money for those of us that were hurting most. And when we didn't have anything to eat at home, and we were getting headaches and migraines, it was this staff and this school that fed me and my family. And so make no mistake, it was this community and this class and this staff that did all those things. Thank you.
So pretty powerful. And so as we said earlier, you know, our intent next year, full-time, which we've announced for some time now. And we certainly hope that we get these masks off and everything else and get ourselves back to normal. But I just, more than anything, our principals, our staff here, our teachers, our entire support staff, they're the ones who make this happen. And the data really supports it. But it's the humans in the system and their commitment to our students going above and beyond. And that's the thing that I always hold on to here in this district that, you know, a student's got to be more than just a number. It's got to be more than just, you know, someone on your computer screen. It's got to be a human that you're connected with. And I'm so, so, so very proud of our staff. So very proud, so thank you.
I just, I just want to echo that. I want to thank our administration, our principals in our schools, and that this year is in our, starting to be in our rear-view mirror. And then we can talk about the substance. This year, we will reflect in many, many ways. The focus on the mental health of our children in our school system has always been a passion. And the focus of what this pandemic has done for them and their learning is so critical and so appreciated. But I just want to echo again, thank you, all of you. Thank you, our community, thank you, our students, our parents. But thank you to you, the administration, who made this work. We are so grateful, and I want to give you standing ovation. I really do. That is very powerful to hear those children speak about their experience. I feel safe, I feel good about our future and our country, those kids as our leaders. And they're going to be tougher and take care of us when we're old, hopefully, right? So, okay, thank you for that. Any other board member updates?
I, so because Ken and I talk so much about the career pathways program, and I love it as much, I think it's just fabulous. I told you that I would reach out to Amy Derrick of Barrett Dermatology. And she was very excited and would like information about it. They have 16 locations around Illinois.
Right down the road here.
That's right. And so could I please, could someone please send me information that I may forward on to her?
Yep, yep, I'll connect with you after this. And just so you know, Ashley and all board members, this is actually a more common occurrence than you think. Like, some of our business partners have been just like this, referrals for board members. And so when people go to business meetings now, you know, we collect cards and that, Amy will probably get a call from Lauren Cook trying to get, you know, her signed up to help lead one of our business partners. So thank you for that.
Any other board members? Okay, finance.
I was going to say, I was able to attend the graduation at Main West with Sheila in person for a while. And most definitely, we have seen a live, energetic parents and students and so on. Definitely great to see that in person. And I think, like everyone was mentioning, the weather was great, and we had a great participation as well.
I think, thank you. And I think all three graduations were beautiful and beautifully well-done. So, Amy, thank goodness, it might have been a little warm, but it didn't rain. So we'll take it. Thank you, John. Brenda, finance committee update.
So the finance committee meeting was held on May 17. Members present were myself, Linda Coyle, Jen Lee, and Sheila Joseph Bierfussen. Meeting was called to order at 5:01 PM, and there were no public comments. One of the items we discussed is the PE towel bid. Six companies were sent bid packages, and only one responded, which is the Paramark, which we've used for a long time. And I believe tonight, we're going to discuss later approving a three-year contract for $124,224. We also discussed the Main South Fitness Center equipment. There is a donor who is going to donate money to cover the purchase of new fitness center at Main South. School has researched products and is happy with a company called Fitness Connection. And they were also the lowest bidder at $158,791.20. Once this overview is completed, and I think it might be by tonight, yeah, we will hear about that later. And I believe we're going to vote on approving that. And then part of the approval of the equipment bid, the donation of cover costs will. We also discussed the July bill payment resolution because this is the first time this year, there will not be a July board meeting this year. So a resolution is required to pay construction contracts and recurring bills for June. Each vendor must be listed on the resolution for them to get paid prior to the August meeting. And then also, the vendors will get paid in August. The board will be asked to ratify the July bill in August. Pepper, accounting adjustment number 14 was also discussed. Three bids for room signage that is fully approved. It's a May board meeting. Following the approval, the district assigns the contracts to local construction to keep one point of contactable warranty. This adjustment is for $123,900. Transfer from operations and maintenance to capital projects was, I believe, the final item that was discussed at the finance committee. The district pledged $45.7 million of fund balance to offset the construction plan. The recommendation is to transfer $4 million this year from operations and maintenance to capital projects to cover a portion of this. And this transfer of funds will be discussed tonight as well. Today, $34 million has been transferred to the capital projects. And the meeting was adjourned at 5:23.
Thank you. Teri, buildings and grounds.
Okay. The on-demand meeting of the Buildings and Grounds Committee was held on May 17, 2021. The members present were myself, Linda Coyle, and Ashley Kildare. Called the meeting to order at 5:24. Dan, we really have one item on the agenda, and that was the construction update. Ryan Aberley, project manager at Main East, gave the main construction update. Main East fieldhouse and adjacent parking lot are substantially complete, and the students really love it. Center court is in the finishing stages. The girls locker room and food labs were turned over early for demolition. Steel beams will be added to the support, to support the roof in the east hallway. Work is progressing nicely at the Main South entrance commons area. The east facade is near completion, and the west facade is making good progress. Just so you know, the west facade is what you can see from D Road. And the east facade is where the connection to A Wing is. They're still trying to figure out how to repair, replace the west sidewalk area. The Main West fieldhouse opened in April, and site work will finish this summer. It's being fully used, and the students love it. The lower-level rotunda work is well underway, and the first-floor area will be demoed once summer break starts. The L Wing has existing structural walls that need to be redesigned for the student services area. There will be intense construction at all three buildings during the eight weeks of summer. And with being known for their business, we adjourned the meeting at 5:41 PM.
Thank you. And I should have said my earlier comments, all that was done in the midst of a large construction project at all three schools. And we have great thanks for all of you to that, but especially we have thanks to our assistant superintendent of business, Mary Kalu, who's going to give us a finances update. But thank you for your continued triple work through all of it.
In your board package is the April financial report. If you look on the revenue side, there are some small variances, and they're basically related to property taxes. We will soon get our final 2020 tax rate and allocations to funds. So we balance that at the end of the year, and you'll see those 1% or 2% adjustments even out. On the expenditure side, we are still trending, just like we did in the March quarterly update in detail. Expenditures are under budget largely due to the pandemic and things like overtime and not filling positions that were not needed during, when we were virtual, as well as diminished transportation for activities and athletic events. So all in all, we are doing performance better than business and better than budget, and anticipate ending the year with a small surplus. I'll entertain any questions that anybody has on the April financial report.
Any questions or comments for Mary? Thank you. Sean, instructive services.
Thank you. So in your board package, you have what's called our college follow-up report. So each June, we bring you an update. This is information gathered from the National Student Clearing House. There, the National Student Clearing House is not 100% accurate. I always like to point that out, because not 100% of our students are in there. Some, a slight change such as, you know, going from, you know, using your name John, Jonathan, or something of that nature could, you could get lost in the system. And I only say that because there's some wiggle room in these numbers. But the bigger picture, I think for this year, is the trend that we saw nationwide was that we had a smaller number of students enroll in the fall in college. That tracking with the national trend is a little bit higher. However, we can anticipate, well, we can guess that that's because of the pandemic. But many, many factors go into whether a student, you know, begins college in the fall after their student. But one thing that I will point out in the second paragraph of the memo, and it's a data point that we are keeping an eye on related to what Ken presented earlier. And that is the four-year graduation rate. And so when we talk about students being able to go to college and know what they want to do, they're more likely to graduate in four years. And so what we have seen is that steady increase of about 3% to 4% of students each year who are finishing in four years. That translates to real money. And so if you look at this, there's a six-year rate for a reason. Because it's more likely that students take six years to graduate than four. And so when you look at that in terms of yearly college tuition, that makes a difference. And so that's one of the data points we'll always keep an eye on as we build out our capacity to stay in touch with our students, such as you saw with Nicole. That's another one of our goals, is to really have a mechanism to do that. And so combining those factors will help us determine how effective our programs are related to career and college planning.
I have told this board on multiple occasions, you know, a few years ago even, as we really started down this road, it should be expected. Now, the pandemic is an outlier event, but it should be expected accurately that we may have fewer kids in Portland in a four-year college right out of high school. That doesn't mean that's a bad thing. Think about the kid who, years ago, just because that was the expected thing, who goes to, oh, did I go to a college? Not having any idea what they want to do, and they're out in two or three years, still without a degree, who now maybe is going to go IVW and become an electrician or any number of other things that are really, really good careers for them. In the past, that kid would have been, you know, sort of pressured to go to college, even if they didn't really understand why they were going. As we get better at this, we should actually anticipate, we may have fewer kids. But Sean's point about, we've always had way better than national averages completion rates for our kids. But we should actually expect that our four-year rates go up because the kids know why they're going. And if they know why they're going, they've got some dual credits in their pocket, the research is, to get dual credits in high school, you want to be more likely to finish, probably more likely to finish on time or ahead of time.
One question, are we able to track out the students who do go to community college and then continue on to four-year? And we're able to see how long it takes them if they do? Okay, we can break that out?
We can, yes. So if you look deeper in that resource, and you start to look at the areas where it talks about enrollment and then two-year to four-year, four-year degree completion, you can pull those particular pieces out of it. But if there's anything in particular you'd like to take a look at, you can always contact myself or Don Mars. I'll have to dive a little bit more deeply into it in detail if you want to know more about it.
If I recall correctly, years ago, when we first started getting this data, we had less, we're getting more and more each year that we're able to track and get, for instance, that equation. Is there a way to identify kids, how many kids did take a gap year? Because I know it was much more common, obviously, with the pandemic. Or is that just something?
We can infer, we can infer based on this.
Just be interested in that, and then track it with other years.
That 10% will represent some kind of gap year. Why we don't- Why, we don't know. So whether it's intentional, whether it has to do with families losing jobs, like, so, so we can from that ten percent give, give you a number of students.
Yeah, be interested in that. If it's easily accessible.
Yep, it is. I can make sure you get that.
Any other questions, comments for Sean on this? Any four-year requests?
Five this month all have been responded to or in the process of improvement.
Thank you. Okay, and then we have first reading on the Board of Education policies and procedures. Sean again.
Yes, so I actually have Don Rangelstein here with me this evening in case you have any detailed questions about this. But what happened, I think it was two years ago now, twenty nineteen, Student Online Personal Protection Act was passed. What that requires is that anyone that we contract with in terms of, that has the potential to be using student data, so really anything that rosters a student into a classroom that we use in educational technology has to be what's called SOCA compliant to protect the data of that student. And so as a result of that, not only is that part of all the contracts now that we sign with the tech companies, and Don has done an excellent job going back and sort of getting everything into alignment, we're required to have a board policy on it as well. So the board policy that you see here is straight out of press, so this has been written by the Illinois School Board lawyers, and so adopting it in schools, there's no necess, there's no reason for us to add or subtract anything from it because it covers the requirements of the data. But if you have any questions, you have an entertainment.
And since this is first reading, we won't go on tonight, and if you have questions in the interim between our next regular board meeting, you can ask. Okay, and textbooks and supplemental resources, first reading, Sean?
Yes, so we have another novel adoption. This novel, the details are on page two of the memo. But this particular novel is called Blacken Up, and what this is, is a series of short stories. And so what will be used, the, the English department will be using this as selection. So they won't read the novel in a pool, but certain particular stories, the students can have an opportunity to choose, so there's a bit of a choice read related to that. But also then, whatever they do as a class as a whole, then will be guided by the teacher. And so this, again, we're continuing to try to diversify, really, our tone of literature that our students have exposure to. And this, this will be an addition, an adoption with that intent. So again, first reading, if you will look more into that, we can have a conversation. You can email me, or we can have a further conversation.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our consent agenda. For a motion for approval of our consent agenda items eight, A through I, so moved. Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Okay, we are moving on to page one of our agenda, moving up to four. Hour and five minutes, that's okay. Do I have a motion on number nine, Board of Education policies, second reading, policy six, three, ten? So moved.
Second.
Sean, you want to share? You want to discuss that?
I lost.
Number nine?
No.
High school credit for non, for non-district experiences. It's okay, it was a long incentive jump out.
This is, this is a second reading of this particular policy. This is, as we pointed out last time, it's really about foreign language courses and the ability to, what's new, I guess, that impacts us the most is the ability to credit foreign language program, or courses taken outside of the high school for high school credit. The, the policy now allows for that, but then also work-related training in, in tech programs and credit for vocational academies. That's just an expansion of what we're able to grant credit for, high school credit for from non-public school entities.
Also press recommended?
Yes.
Correct.
All the additions that you see in red are from press. They, we do have some unique ones, but they're leftover from the last iteration of the policy.
Any questions or comments for Sean?
But we did discuss this at, and we also discussed it at the education committee.
Okay. Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Moving on to number ten, approval of bids and awarding of contracts. Do I have a motion on ten A, mastery manager, one-year subscription? So moved. Everyone's so shy tonight. I know they are. Okay, Sean?
Yeah, so this, we've been using this product for well over a decade now. It is a product that we use, teachers use primarily to assess tests. And what this enables us to do is to do some item analysis, as well as determine how students are doing on certain test questions, which then the PLTs analyze and use to address any, any concerns they might have related to student achievement in those areas. So this is something we've approved every year now, each year.
And that's the price per year?
That is the price per year. So we, we, we signed, we've entered a contract with them, but what we've traditionally done more recently is any contract over twenty-five thousand dollars, even if it's something we've approved in the past, we still bring each year.
And what does it, do you know what is the increase each year? Is it, is it two percent? Does it, has it stayed?
It varies. This particular one has stayed pretty flat over the time that we've used it because we were actually one of the first school districts to sign on with mastery manager many, many years ago. But when you're talking about, well, actually, Don, do you want to, sorry, do you want to talk about just what we typically see as increases? You also mentioned in anticipation of maybe some greater increases in the future?
What's going on right now is a lot of vendors are aware that Esther monies are being distributed, so they're responding in time. So it's not all that surprising that they would be doing that. However, some people are holding it light, too. I mean, we typically see, you know, CPI plus a little bit maybe for increases, but yeah, this year it could be different.
Was there competition?
The, the problem is when you migrate off of one system that's, that's actually closer to two decades on mastery manager, when you migrate off, there's a cost per migration that isn't just dollars. It's, you know, it's already a whole new system and all that, but.
I was going to say, and actually, this, this is a very reasonable price for the product and not out of line with any other product that we've come to do.
And we achieved three thousand. Is that one also the contract per year?
So the achieve three thousand.
Two hundred and ten.
Yep, I'm just sliding down. So for achieve three thousand, this is, this is a one-year contract, but let me describe what the product is because that's a pretty heavy price point.
You know, it doesn't matter for, we're not voting on that. We're only on ten A right now.
Yeah, we can wait.
So, is that okay?
We just moved that.
We only moved on ten A, so just to keep it cleaner. Okay. Any other questions on ten A? Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on ten B, Airmark PE Towel Services? Mary, you want to?
Bits were left for PE towels. Airmark, our incumbent provider, was the only company out of six that we solicited to bid to that variety of bid. Their actual first-year price is about three cents lower for towels we're currently paying. So we are recommending the awarding of a three-year contract in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Any questions or comments for Mary on the?
So are those primarily used for like the swimming units and the diving and the waterfall?
Correct. They're available, they're also available in the locker rooms near the shower area. So if you, student were to shower, they have PE towels there as well.
Okay, understood.
So based on those three schools, generally, which school are choosing most, would you say?
Main West. Been lots of special areas on the Main West, PE towels. And maybe now that we're consolidating athletic areas, we'll have, go down on towels, but.
We scramble on.
All right, any other questions?
And the cost with our?
It was, we are currently paying about eighteen cents per towel. Their first year is fifteen cents.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on ten C, fitness center equipment? It means South.
So this bid started with the schools interviewing companies. They then selected the product that they wanted to bid. When bids were received, there was an alternate product that was proposed by a bidder. So then the school went and did some site visits to take a look at this equipment, ultimately found that that alternate was acceptable. So this evening, we are recommending an alternate product to what was specified from Fitness Connection in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven ninety-one twenty. One hundred percent of the, of this will be paid for via a donation.
This was something that we were planning to be.
This was none of the schools, so we, we talk about the fitness centers of the schools. Main West got the newest best fitness center several years ago. Main East has the nicest fitness center, and Main South will have the nicest equipment within their fitness center. It is similar equipment to what the other schools have, and actually, their weight racks were probably in the worst shape of all of the schools. So none of the schools got all brand-new equipment. Some of the equipment from South will be repurposed to some of the other schools. And at Main East, we're in the process of replacing some of the racks because of how they need to be configured within the new fitness center.
So dollar-wise, we're fairly close as far as?
They're all, they're, they're, number of racks, they're reasonably close. Number of spin bikes, they're all kind of all over the board with, I think, probably East having the fewest and West having the most. And then random pieces of weight equipment, they, they each have what they need for their program, but they're not identical.
Okay, thanks. Jenny? Lee?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on ten D, pepper accounting adjustment number fourteen, signage?
So moved. Second.
At the main Board of Education meeting, we awarded bids for classroom and room signage in the amount of one hundred and twenty-three nine hundred dollars. We immediately assigned those contracts to Pepper. So this is just the paperwork for that assignment and accounting for the overall contract with Pepper.
Any questions, comments? Jenny? Owen?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on ten E, Albert I O supplemental resource for AP classes?
So moved.
Second. Oh, there we go, or a tie.
So Albert I O is a platform, this and the next contract in particular are related to remote learning. The online resources that we have are, make it available for students to access these at any location, any time. And so we've been using Albert I O, it's kind of a pilot format the last couple of years, and it's really taken hold, particularly with the AP classes for placement for rap. It is a database of courses, or I'm sorry, it's a database of questions that's very extensive. And again, it allows for the item analysis and the assignment of specific support questions and information to students as they hone their skills based upon their needs. So this is a one-year license, I'm sorry, it's a three-year contract, forgive me, at fifty-six six ninety-seven.
Questions, comments?
Thank you. So Sean, does this go along with kind of what we spoke about earlier, moving toward more blended learning, where kids will be able to be in class and then also be able to access this, or is this going to be for totally remote learning?
No, this is for all students. And so there are times when teachers assign, assignments from this during class, sometimes at home. It really isn't, it's really more of a, a practice site, but also we're moving away from a textbook and AP site. And so this is enabling some of the content and the test questions from AP site, for example, to, to serve almost as a textbook resource as well. It's a pretty robust tool. And because we have the opportunity with CARES Act money to enter a three-year contract, we wanted to take full advantage of that because this is allowable under that funding that act.
And how will we learn if students are able to utilize these programs and services? Is that some kind of data?
Yes, we have usage data per teacher, per student on, on all of this information, which is one of the powerful pieces of having an online platform.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Jenny? Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on termination of masonry repair contract with Strux M C?
So moved.
As we got into coordinating all of the work we're trying to do at Main West for the construction referendum project and the masonry work, we found that, that we couldn't coordinate all the work, so we requested that we terminate our contract with Strux M C for a small portion of masonry work on the work, I mean, masonry work on the roof. And then because this work was not scheduled to start until this summer, they have not done any of the work, so we simply pay them for those points that they've incurred and costs that they've incurred to date, and according to our contract, we are allowed to terminate.
Questions, comments? Jenny? Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on ten G, achieve three thousand contract? So moved. Sean, and please address Ashley's question.
Yes, so this product is a very robust product. It literally has all disciplines contained in an online format, which is why it represents a cost of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We started with a free version of this product this past fall, particularly with, in all of our classes, but also particularly with remote students, because it gives us an ability, again, to set, to assign very specific, disciplinary specific as well, assignments to students. And it has a very broad base, it's almost like a library unto itself. So when you get into reading, not only does it have your standards, it has, probably not familiar with Nuzella, but it has a very, very broad base of, of reading that can also be leveled, which means that if I'm not reading at a ninth grade level, there are selections for students who could read the same material at maybe a fifth, sixth, seventh grade level. So that way, students sitting in the same class can all read the same book, or the same article, or the same short story, but at their reading level, so they can actually access the information. We are really just piloting this product and using the opportunity to use Esther funds to do that. It's not something that we know whether or not we're going to fully adopt unless it can replace several other products because of the cost. But we have this opportunity to, to do something we normally don't get to do, which is pilot for a year. Usually it's, oh, here's a free version for about three weeks, let us know if you want to buy it. So really CARES Act is money in this case is enable us to do a little bit more experimentation than we normally would.
So we'll be hearing more about that?
Yes.
If I'm back there next year asking for this again, it's, we've made some pretty big decisions about the direction to head and to shift off of some of the other products that we have.
Ashley, did you have any other further questions? Okay. Anyone else, questions, comments? Collins?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Vessler? Moving on to number eleven, do I have a motion for textbook and supplemental resources?
So moved. Second.
This is our second reading of the book, The Book of Unknown Americans, and again, it's just broadening our diversity of our championship leadership.
Talked about this before, any, any questions or comments? Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Owen? Kilburg?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on number 12, Timeline for 2021, 2022, Budget Approval, District 207 and Enserm? So moved.
Mary, this timeline is one we bring every year. And at the beginning of July, we place both the district and the Enserm budget on public display at the August Board of Education meeting. We have a public hearing to provide any input into both of those budgets. The only difference is that the Enserm budget is required by law to be adapted in August and filed in August, and the board budget, the district budget, we wait until September. So if there are any public comments, we have ample time to make any changes that the board wants before adoption in September, because that, the district budget is required to be filed with the state by the end of September.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Jenny? Owen?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Coil?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Moving on to page six, number 13. Do I have a motion on the IGA Intergovernmental Agreement of North Cook Intermediate Service Center?
Hold on a second.
So North Cook is one of the facilities that provides safe schools program for students that have significant disciplinary infractions. And so we're just asking the board to continue with that agreement that we've had for several years and move forward with continuing that partnership.
Is this two seats or three?
Three seats, two assessments.
So, so when I got here in 2005, we used to buy 50 seats a year upfront. And so we have really reduced the number of kids that access this, but from time to time, there are kids that need to access this.
And I think that's largely part of the MTSS one that's been done and sort of practices, but we do still have basically a couple of students.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Jenny? Lee?
Aye.
Coil?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Moving on to number 14, waiver of facility rental fee. Do I have a motion regarding McCaff's office and meeting space at Main East High School?
So moved.
Hold on a second. Okay. Mike, I guess Mike can talk about it.
Hello. So as we have been undergoing renovations, things, CAF is going to be coming to live at Main East. So this is very much consistent with our practice for the last several years as CAF has been located at Main South. So as well, all of the needs are included. It includes office space, sort of workroom space, and then meeting space for parent and student meetings throughout the year. So pretty much as listed in the memo.
Correct. Thank you.
Terry, are you excited to move to Main East?
Yeah. Very excited.
Terry, do you want to comment on anything? You obviously will allow people to know this.
No, that, McCaff really thanks the school district for giving us the space, and it's really the best place for us to be. So thank you. And this COVID has put a damper a little bit on what we've been able to do this year. So hopefully, over the summer, we'll start getting ideas for more programs, and we're told we're going to do it as well.
Okay. So what we're voting on now is that, you know, the waiver of the facility fee, rental, the rental fee, which we have traditionally done at Main South, but now asking to be done at Main East. You can take the call. Lee?
Aye.
Coil?
Aye.
Collins?
Kilburg?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on 15, Resolution Authorizing Prompt Payment of Bills? So moved. Good motion.
That's a good motion.
I think every family should have that motion. We've got to have that. We've got to. Can I explain why we have that motion?
So we're not meeting in July. Yes, there are two categories listed in the resolution. One is construction contracts, of which there are 91. And then reoccurring bills and services, which there are 103. So any entities listed in this resolution, we are authorized to pay once the proper paperwork has been processed, and then ratification of that payment will occur in August.
Any questions? Comments? Jenny? Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Coil?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on 16A and B, New Club Proposals at Main East?
Hold on.
Second. Give me a second. Here's Terry. Mike?
All good.
Happy birthday to you as well.
Happy birthday.
Yep.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. So again, in the memos, they're pretty straightforward. The Animal Advocates Club was a club that actually, Dennis sort of came out of the Gifted Lyceum Program at the Junior Proposal Night. And this last year, they've actually met pretty regularly virtually. And while they have not necessarily, as a club, been able to get out in the community and do the kind of community service that typically your individuals did in the Get Out in the Club, so they have been active. It's been our practice at East for, there'd be a trial period of approximately a school year, and they've been successful with clubs running in their, with a deal for another year. As far as the women and non-binary people in STEM, again, paragraphically outlines the mission. We understand that STEM is underrepresented. We think about women and other gender identities. It tends to be very male-dominated. So this is a club that has been really active, starting virtually and in-person, particularly the second semester. Anybody is welcome to be a member of the club, so it's not exclusive in any way, shape or form, just as our cultural clubs have always been formed at Main East. And again, they've got a really super bright and motivated group of officers, and that was them just to learn a little bit more last week, and they've been doing great work along with their sponsor, and are poised to continue into the next week.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Owen?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coil?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Okay, just moving on to informational items, the calendar items under 17. Please note that there's no July meeting, Board of Education meeting. The next one, regular scheduled board meeting, will be August 2nd, which is my birthday, Mike, so we'll just keep planning on people's birthdays in the room, so.
So we have one, it was the July meeting that you could?
Yeah, the July meeting.
Okay, so there, we have a choice.
It was the August.
Okay. And we have another month to set that. I'm in the process of working on our formalized committee meeting dates. So this is the date for July. We're trying to resolve in August, kind of click, and then once we get that resolved, the entire year will be published in Friday notes.
True. Okay. Education Committee is also going to set up a meeting, and we will let the full board know, so if they want to attend. It'll be sometime.
I'm thinking July.
July. And as all of the board members know, I contacted you each individually, including Sheila, who's on vacation today. We're going to be meeting on 4:30 on June 21st to get our full board picture, so be there. Not much else to say on that, but it will be nice to have our new board's full picture. Any additional public comments at this time? Okay. Any other additional notes? Do I have a motion to go into closed?
Can I do another item before we go into closed session?
Of course.
Just a little bit of information.
Sure. Other, other items.
So after closed session, there is a recommendation that the board is being asked to vote on for a Director of Fiscal Services. We are recommending Patricia Alvarez for that position, and Patricia's with us this evening. So I thought rather than making her wait until after closed session, that we could introduce her now and she could go home.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We're all about efficiency, especially.
I'm so happy.
I would have introduced her at the beginning of the meeting and let her go home.
Yes. I was like, okay.
Do you want to say anything? Do you want to say anything about her?
So Patricia's coming from East Aurora. She is the Assistant Finance Director there, so she has educational finance experience. We let the staff, always dangerous in my opinion, meet with her, like the office staff meet with her separately, so that, and that was really nice to get their perspective as well as Patricia's perspective on us doing that. So it was a several-round interview process, RIBS process. We had lots of good candidates, but we are super excited, and I don't think anybody's more excited than I am. Thank you very much. I am super excited to be joined in the team. Everybody's been super nice and very welcoming, so I thank you very much.
Terrific. Thank you.
Welcome. Yeah, that's great.
She can excuse. Terrific. Thanks, Mary, for doing your, we like to consider it a weekend, so. Okay, now do I have a motion, and this is going to be a long one, to go into closed session for the purposes of student personnel review of closed session minutes, imminent or pending litigation, appointment, employment compensation, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and security procedures and use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual, a threatened, or a reasonably potential danger to safety of employees, students, staff, the public, or public property.
Second.
Who got the second? Who wants that? Okay. So thank you, that includes the first part of our open session. We're going to go into closed session now.
Paul, I need to call the roll for this one.
Call what?
The motion.
We have to call the roll. Oh, we have to do the roll. Collins?
I know the outcome.
Collins?
Aye.
Coil?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Okay, now we're. Okay, then we need to, two, 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 two. Ready? Do I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Collins?
Here.
Coil?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
It's an I.
Wait, I, it's a, sorry.
Coil?
Aye.
Kilburg?